Meeting is called to order now at six oh three P M. Lindsay, we have a roll call, please.
Yes. Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Wendy Newland.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Lewis.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Michael Lowry.
On the minutes. Okay, well, let's say that because I always like saying as they're in, as I will here in a moment. Any amendments to the agenda, Commissioners, I have none. Okay. Determination of alternate voting, we have all the regular Commissioners here, so sorry, Alternates, but you won't vote tonight, but certainly participate. This is a good point, good time to introduce our newest Commissioner Renzo Bianchi down to my far left. Welcome, Renzo. And we, as part of our, our orientation, we tell new Commissioners, there are no stupid questions. We, so that very much holds true. Anything that we can help with for your education, we certainly will be willing to do, right, Commissioners? We've all been there. So, public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody who wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. There will be public comment permitted on the business item. Is anybody, we are kind of foregoing our sign up sheet, but I doubt anybody wished to speak on anything not on the agenda. Mr. Gross, you being perhaps the only first in that category. Okay, all right, we now close the general public comment. Consent agenda consists only of approval of the August twentieth, twenty four meeting minutes. Did I understand you found a, so any additions or corrections? And I understand you found one?
Oh, just a picky point. They incorrectly referred to Tom in the, in the meeting minutes. So it was Vice Chair, so.
He's the Vice Chair.
Yeah. Okay. You did not get a demotion, so. Okay, so if we could, Lindsay, if we could correct that, please. With that change, do I hear a motion on the consent agenda, please?
The August twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda is approved. We have one business item tonight, item six A, Dutch Bros site plan. Logan, I believe that's yours.
It is. Okay, let me load up the tab. Okay. The Dutch Bros site plan is an application for a drive through coffee shop consisting of one building, an outdoor patio, a drive through lane, and a parking area. The subject property is located south of Harmony Boulevard, east of Interstate twenty five, west of Weitzel Street, and north of Swetsville Road in the Gateway Timna South subdivision. Again, this is consideration of a site plan application, which is one of the final steps in our land development process. For this proposal, we use the site plan criteria in section two nine nine of the Land Use Code to review the proposal. And our Land Use Code requires Planning Commission approval for all development site plans, and notification for site plans is not required. The zoning for this property is C two, community commercial with a planned development overlay, which was approved in December of two thousand and thirteen. Key elements of the site plan include a nine hundred and twenty square foot building, a two hundred square foot outdoor patio space, a drive through with two lanes, a parking area with nine parking spaces, and this is inclusive of one ADA and one E V space, and a separate area for trash pickup. The applicant meets the open space and landscaping requirement as prescribed by code with the understanding that the Box Elder easement encumbers approximately twenty five percent of this property. So here in the orange on the left, you can see that ditch easement. And the ditch easement doesn't like root materials of any sort of root depth in their easement, and they like to keep their easements clear of obstructions for access and maintenance. So that really limits the sort of plant materials that you can put in that area. I also wanted to point out, like, on the right, Dutch Bros was, was, went ahead and continued their landscaping in the sidewalk, the street scape along the frontage, and that blue area is actually owned by Costco. So we're very appreciative that they were able to extend that up north. So another area of concern that we had when we were reviewing the site plan was the number of curb cuts proposed on this site. And that's just because it can negatively impact the functionality of the site. It kind of detracts and reduces the amount of landscaping and street trees. It creates more conflict points between vehicles and pedestrians, and it can complicate turning movements on the site. So we do recognize that the shape of this lot complicated the design and the layout. So the, the applicant did try different options, and this is the one they landed on. And then our last area of concern when reviewing this was just the prominence of the, the blue color. It kind of dominates the building. We did ask the applicant to tone it down, and they did so with the submission. So, so this is an improvement from the first. But generally speaking, earth tones help buildings blend better with their natural surroundings. Materials and colors are the most visually impactful when you look at a site. So staff, you know, did want to work with them to tone it down, but we don't really have anything in our Land Use Code that speaks to color schemes. So we're limited in that area. But generally speaking, the application meets the review criteria and complies with the requirements we have in the Land Use Code and the planned development overlay. And we recommend approval of the site plan. And I see a left end trail side, but that should be Dutch Bros. And so with that, I will give it over to Kathy.
By the way, did I, did I air already in the first five minutes? I mean, is it Dutch Bros? I see, I stand corrected, I, not brothers. Okay. Very good, thank you, and I apologize.
Do I push this button? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Kathy Mathis with T B Group. I'm a landscape architect and land planner, and we're here representing the project tonight. And with me, behind me, is Tom Donkel, the guy with the beard. He's an owner's rep. And if you have any questions about construction or anything like that, he can answer those. And then Nate Frary is next to him, and Nate is the local franchisee for the Dutch Bros here in northern Colorado. Okay. I won't repeat a lot of what Logan said, because you guys know where this is in the world, right? I can't get this to advance. Oh, here we go. And again, she already gave a good summary, the land use, how big it is, how big the building is, nine hundred and twenty square feet. She also gave us a great summary of the parking, so I won't repeat that either. Here's a colored site plan. It makes it look a little better when there's some, you know, showing some color and some landscaping, particularly along that far west side. We did manage to get, by that Box Elder easement, a row of grasses and shrubs and those kind of things to help screen the, the drive through lanes. As well as the east, we're continuing that wider sidewalk from all the way down to the south by Freddie's and Panda Express and continuing it all the way up to the Belco Credit Union site. So you can see a nice wide sidewalk with a tree lawn along there as well. Here's the elevations, and they do, they do look a little bit like they're a little cool colored, and I'll show you a picture here in a minute. But we did go ahead and switch out that, I can't point with this, but it's the, the elevation on that lower left hand side, we replaced that glass that Logan mentioned. It was going to be a panel, and now it's glass. We went ahead and made that change before tonight. And then here last are just some images taken from Cheyenne. This is their most recent completed construction, and it gives you a little bit better idea of the colors, that they really are a little bit warmer and not so, not so cool and gray as those architectural renderings are showing. So with that, I will go ahead and end my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, just stay up there, Kathy, please. So we do have public comment, and I don't believe there's anybody here wishes to speak on this particular business item. So we will close the, the site plan public comment and bring it up here to the Commissioners. Commissioners, I've got a number of questions. I'm going to open it up to you all first. Who would like to go first?
I've got a question.
All right. Ladies first.
Is it, is it the intent only to be a drive through, or can you walk up and order coffee as well?
It's a walk up and a drive through, correct? Yeah.
Because right there next to Costco in the parking lot, I, I can expect a lot of foot traffic there, and I, I appreciate what you've done with the sidewalks and so forth. I think that makes sense.
Thank you.
And the colors, I mean, it's a Dutch Bros, and you want it to be recognizable, so I, I see some, some, that makes a lot of sense to, to have their standard colors. Outside seating was, was mentioned in here. Can, can you address that a little bit, what, what your plans are?
Can you go back to the site plan, Logan? I also wanted to point out that I forgot to point out that we do, there is a crosswalk too that's going over to the Costco parking lot. You can see it kind of down that striped area in that lower right hand corner. It's hard to see on this because the building's so tiny, but on the west side of the building there, there's a little covered outdoor patio. So you can kind of see it in that light gray to the, the west side of the building. So that's where the outdoor seating is going to be.
Great, I just can see a lot of people at Costco coming over for coffee, because that, that makes a lot of sense. That's the only comments I've got, Phil. I think this is a good project, thank you.
What, what is the outdoor, I saw on that where you mentioned the requirements, and it looked like it was one? Where, go back, go backwards if you would, please.
There is an additional parking requirement for outdoor seating areas in addition to the requirement for a restaurant.
That's, that's it, not seating, it's parking for the outdoors, for the, okay. What, Tom, did you get your question answered about, you mentioned outdoor seating? What, what was your specific?
Well, it says in the staff notes, concerns were raised about the curb cuts, which you, you covered. There was also some concerns raised about potential for outdoor seating. Looking back to the exact words that.
So is there outdoor seating?
There is outdoor season, seating. I think we were concerned more about the seasonality. So during the cold months, which we tend to get in Colorado, there's not an indoor seating component. So it does limit the site in that way.
I don't think there's indoor seating at any Dutch Bros that I'm aware of.
The only one is on the west side of Fort Collins, which used to be the Farmer's Table Restaurant near Campus West, and that converted into a Dutch Bros a couple of years ago. And there is indoor sitting, seating there, but it's only by virtue. All their other models do not have indoor seating.
But there is, I'm not terribly hung up on this, but there is, for somebody who walks up and wants to drink their coffee right there, there is some outdoor seating rather permitting, but.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm seeing there?
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Okay, all right. And that's what the number of parking spaces, about how many staff are there at one time in there? So you got four, several parking spaces just for somebody who drives over there, parks, and wants to walk up and sit there and drink coffee, okay. Tom, did you get anything else? Wendy?
No.
Logan, this is probably for you. Is, is, they're coming in that, that furthest point, right? The drivers, and there's two lanes, am I looking at that right? And then they.
It's like it's one lane coming in.
And then it expands to two.
Expands to two, and then there's a centerpiece where they place their order, and then they funnel into one place to pick it up, and then they exit out the bottom of those dash lines. Am I looking at that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. So it's one way in into the drive through. It circles around the site, and then you would exit on that southern access.
I just wondered if I'm looking at it right, thank you.
I have one question about that. It appears that there's sufficient number, since it's only drive through, sufficient number of stacking? Is that the expression? In, in your opinion, is this sufficient and then some?
It far exceeds our code requirement. So yes, I believe they have sufficient stacking.
Just practicing up for In-N-Out Burger if it ever comes to fruition. Okay, go ahead, who's next? Who would like to go next? My, anything down there? Renzo? Mike?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mike.
So, peak hour traffic, when, when is that likely to be?
Come on up to the microphone if you would, please. Say, give it your name and your.
I'm Nate Frary. Mike, it honestly varies quite a bit, and I think across the board, kind of peak hours could be, you know, we open at five A M. every day, and so it can be, you know, from six to eleven at some locations, and then some of our other locations are busier, hours are actually in the afternoon now, which is people coming on lunch breaks or going home from work and those kind of things, so. But I, I would say kind of a general peak would probably be like from seven to twelve A M., typically.
Do you have any projections on how many cars you expect to go through there per hour at that time? Let me, my question is more related to the whole intersection of Harmony and Weitzel, which is challenging sometimes now. I just, I just wonder if that, you know, how that would be impacted by this addition.
We honestly anticipate a large amount of our specific traffic to be people who are already visiting Costco. And so this will be our ninth location in northern Colorado for our brand, and it's pretty much right smack in the middle of our entire market. And so a big draw for us to this location was the, just the availability for people who are familiar with our brand in other areas to come by while they're already there shopping, so.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you.
Michael?
You said there are nine stores in the area. How many of them are you the franchise owner of?
All nine of them.
So, so you have the experience, that was my question. Thank you.
Ari?
Okay, so Logan, on the, there's concern on the curb cuts. Being, one is the, the garbage, you know, from, looks like. Does that kind of mitigate the concern? Essentially, there's the in and then the out, you know, the north and south one. And then the other is only going to use, be used when they're picking up the dumpster.
And are you asking in terms of like turning movements and vehicle conflict?
Well, yeah, just in terms of, you mentioned it, you know, it was in here as, you know, a concern.
Yeah.
Is it somewhat mitigated by that's going to be limited, the third one is limited use?
That, yes, yeah. So it's specific for the garbage pickup. So that will have limited use, and then the one way in for the drive, that also helps. So I think we weigh those and.
Yeah, because I, I think the alternative would probably take away parking, right? If you eliminated one.
I believe that is what the design constraint was. When they tried to consolidate the trash enclosure with the parking lot, it eliminated several spaces.
Because it really, I mean, it's an odd shaped lot, and it's actually a good use for that to kind of, you know, the way, the way it is. The other concern that was noted was the, you know, just the colors. I know the other buildings around kind of have highlights, you know, of their corporate colors or highlights on the building and not real prominent. So just wanted to understand the concern more with the changes, is it make it better or?
Yeah, so a lot of codes will have, you have the, they'll have like a, you have to keep it earth tones, and then there's ability to have bright colors as accents. And so there's kind of a threshold not to exceed ten, fifteen percent. So I think the schematics make it look a little better, a little toned down. It does look more earthy as opposed to gray. But I think generally, you know, we don't want to see bright buildings. It doesn't really reinforce the, the existing character of the area. It kind of detracts from the natural area. So, but our code is silent on it, so that's an area that we can look at.
Do I understand, excuse me, we, we do have the discretion, though, absent of strict standards. For instance, we have parking standards, we have signs, we have some discretion in that regard, correct?
You do have discretion with the site plan criteria in two nine nine nine. I believe, yeah, if you go through them, the last one.
Go, go ahead, keep going.
And I guess it sounds like, and you all going back and forth on this, you know, the addition of windows was kind of meant to kind of break that up a little?
Yeah, there's a transparency requirement, so the windows did help. They, they substantially increased the amount of transparency from the first of metal. And so we're happy with where it landed.
Overall, overall, you're happy with the way it's landed, or?
Given the site constraints and, and what we're dealing with, and just, I guess, the model, you know, I, I, in some places, if you have a drive through facility, they require you to have an indoor component. And, and so I think just given what we have in front of us, yes, it meets our code.
Okay. I'll go back to, I'll go back to the curb cut issue. I, I got a sense in, is there anything that you would do differently that can be done differently? I got a sense, we're, we're not necessarily trying to shoehorn something in here. I agree, it seems to work well with this piece of land, whereas so many other things wouldn't. Is there anything that's within our discretion, that, within the commission's discretion, that maybe is not in the code that would improve your concerns about the cuts?
I think the curb cuts, you know, they tried to address it, given the constraints of the site, and knowing that this drive has been considered a private drive aisle, not really a street. So if it were a street, we would have major concerns. But given that it's across from the parking area of Costco, I think those things mitigate those impacts. It's always, you know, if they were to consolidate the access, we're eliminating some, some parking. And so we're kind of balancing multiple things here.
I, I don't, certainly the, the poster child within Timna is the Walmart Plaza. We never completely resolved it for the very simple reason that it's private property, and just Walmart, as, as I understand it from council meetings, not coming to the table. Looked like for a while they were. This doesn't, to me, and when I first got on Planning Commission was when we first wrestled, we, there was strictly Walmart, and the gas station was the next thing to come in. And Planning Commission at that time could already anticipate the difficulties, sometimes gridlock that we have there, particularly holiday times and such. This does not seem to me by, by any means to rise to those kinds of issues, particularly because we have so much stacking available. It doesn't appear that we'd ever reach that. But is there anything that, that would? Because I know, and even I know this doesn't go to council, but I know council sure depends on us for our site plan to make sure we don't get another situation with Murphy Oil and Walmart Plaza. Is there anything about this Logan, Tom, or Justin, excuse me, that looks like it could create any kinds of problems because of the cuts?
Yeah, appreciate the question. So I guess if you had a time machine and could go back, I think we could look at the layout, right? Especially with the Costco in the parking lot. But we're kind of dealt the hand that we have on that situation. So I think it's the best that you can with the lots that are there. But the difference between this site and the Walmart site is that the Walmart site, there's only one access in and out. Here you have Weitzel Street, so that helps you have different options to get in and out of the site. So I do not foresee this being the same issue as the Walmart site. And the town has done a good job on the west side of, of creating the sidewalks and restricting the parking, so it's not like Costco on both sides. So it's, it's been somewhat addressed, but otherwise you'd have to go back and like just, you know, a tornado maybe took out Costco, then you could start over. Maybe that would be a different question, but I think that the hand we're dealt, it still meets our standards. It's not probably the best, you know, that we could do, but it's, it still meets our standards for what we have and the lot that we have there.
Sure, and, and we're always, you know, I, I know the staff particularly, but we're certainly learning too. When we see that, that various land use code changes, and I think under our, our Community Development Director, we're, and the staff, planning staff, we're looking at land use code changes more often. And we're nothing if not learning from mistakes of the past. So sometimes we're bringing these things up so that it goes on the list the next time if we need to change our standards. But I was just curious if the staff's comfortable with that aspect. I wanted to ask too about landscaping. It appeared here again, we were meeting the standards. Are you entirely comfortable with the landscaping? Is there anything else that, that can be done, should be done, whether it's within the code or within the discretion of the commission?
Due, due to the Box Elder easement, that encumbers. Due to the box elder easement, that encumbers such a large portion of the site, especially on that western side of the lot, where we would want screening from the interstate. And I think it leaves a room for five and a half feet of landscaping. And so you're really limited in terms of the size of plantings you can put there. So we're happy, our landscape architect who reviews our plans was, was happy and satisfied with given this constraints with what was proposed.
I'm going to get to the, the design, the colors in a minute. In, in essence, particularly because as Justin pointed out, each of you pointed out in different ways, we, this is something that fits. We're fortunate that Dutch Bros are interested in, in locating in Timneth and this happens to be something that works. It doesn't appear, am I correct? It doesn't appear that we're settling for something here necessarily, simply because it is something that, that happens to fit. When you take into account curb cut landscaping and everything else, so far, this is is probably the best use of this property for with, for a drive-through coffee shop with lots of stacking. So we don't create any further traffic problems.
Yes, it meets our code and they had a lot to contend with and, yeah. So it's a good use.
All right.
That site.
Now let's, let's talk about the, the colors. I'm, I'm a I'm, I'm a big fan of blue too. And I understand branding just enough to be dangerous. We do have to the extent that we've been able to down through the years, we have sought kind of a harmonious look. Walmart preceded all of us. When we got to Costco, the Walmart building was somewhat, without taking away Costco branding, was somewhat a model. And we did get, I thought, fairly harmonious with what the, our land use code used to say, everything in Timneth should have a rural feel. And that kind of came back and bit us a few times. So when we modified the land use code, I believe we changed that somewhat. But we're still mindful of that heritage. And certainly as we, as we continue to build things, we want that. Commissioners, does anybody else see, it may be a way to, or throwing this back to staff perhaps, to have it be a little bit more harmonious in keeping with the other buildings that surround it on both sides of harmony. Marty, do you recall with Freddie's necessarily in, in those businesses there, Panda Express? He'd be the only one that was around then. We, we did, did seek that. We, we allowed some of the color, but we also didn't go overboard with it.
It was more highlights, like with Freddie's, it was highlights, but it's kind of. If I look at that building, it's more like their other locations where, you know, the red is a highlight and then you have the awnings around there. There's kind of the look, the, what is that one? A Panda Express or?
Panda Express is next to.
I always mix them up with the other panda. But with that one, again, it's, it's more the sign, you know, that has the colors and things on it. But with that one, they, I think it was more. I think it was more kind of a modern look with the tiles that they have there. So that one was a little bit different that way.
Logan, let me put you on maybe on the spot, given the discretion. We have a little bit more. What I left entirely to you, what would you like to see? In terms, because I got a sense left entirely to you or to staff, you would like to see a little bit more harmony, along harmony, if you will. Any thoughts on this?
Um, I think if we were to draft code, we would want the color, the bright colors to be accent only. Typically, we want to see buildings that are flexible. So if it ever were to happen that they would change users, they could do so without a huge undertaking of a facelift, et cetera. But yes, we know that there are branding schemes out there and this is probably a prototype that's used in a lot of places. But yeah, we would want to keep bright colors, I guess, minimal.
And, and recognizing that the, you wouldn't necessarily change. That's your color. That's your blue. I imagine there's a, that, that's the blue. So now we're left with moving more towards accents. Can you see, this is would not be my forte, but can you see ways that the, that it, that it could be more accent as it is maybe at Freddie's? And I'm not comparing you necessarily to Freddie's, but is there ways that you can see this, them to move forward with this with more accents, meaning less large color blocks of blue?
I'll let the applicant take a stab at that first and then.
Logan, can you pull the elevations back up? And I'll just explain to you guys the changes that we already have made. So the standard version of this building design, that prominent like square tower that you see is blue from the ground up. And so again, this is, we just opened this location in Cheyenne in June and they had the same exact concerns. I'm a franchisee of the larger company. I personally hate the blue tower. It is like an eyesore. So we in my market here have never done the full blue tower. We've always worked with Dutch Bros to either swap it out for the stone like on this one, or there's like a cement block look that we've used, like on that, the West Fort Collins location that Kathy described. So and basically, you know, we took the blue off of the tower and swapped it to the interior where it's kind of in the mid body there. I guess without knowing, like, what's the expectation of accent? You know, is that a percentage? I'm not a designer. I'm a coffee maker. And so I, you know, that is kind of, you know, another can of worms, I guess, for me to explore. But I mean, if it's a major concern for the committee, then, you know, I want to meet you guys in the middle. But, you know, we've without you guys seeing kind of what this typically does look like, we have made quite a bit of a change to it as it already is. So.
Well, I, I, we're off to a great start because I, you don't know how seldom we hear we're willing to meet in the middle. So with compromise being our middle name, certainly no pun intended there. It's great to hear a developer, a business owner, developer indicate that. Why don't, staff, what, having heard that, what would you, what would you suggest? I'm not, I'm a coffee drinker, so I'm, I'm even farther away from a designer.
I technically don't make it anymore either. So we have the same job, you and me, coffee drinker.
What, Logan, what, what would you see? Could we? Could we tone it down a bit? Could, what would you see, suggest?
I would suggest if that's a concern of the commission, you certainly can condition the approval to have the applicant submit an alternative color scheme design for our review and approval that tones down or creates more of an accent. I know I'm not giving you the answer you want of like, you need just blue here, not there. But I guess that's what I would recommend.
Well, I think you are in the sense that, and I, I may be all wet here. But again, I, I believe it's a, I believe, again, I never know for sure what council's thinking, but I know given, site plan starts and stops with us. So always more, more sensitive to this. What I'm hearing is that we could make a condition that if staff, if, if the applicant submits a revision, and I don't know that we even have to meet necessarily in the middle. Great to hear, but a revision, authorize staff, if staff's been comfortable with that, we're comfortable with it. Commissioners, I, I may be all wet on this one, but any, any further thoughts on this?
So Logan, you indicated that they had a first submission and then you asked them to come back with a different, like tone it down on the blue. Are we allowed to see that first submission? Because I think this looks really good, what they came up with.
Um, yes, I don't have that in the PowerPoint, but essentially, as the applicant was explaining, that, that brick tower was all blue. So the most exposed portions of the building were blue. And now you have the blue kind of located in the middle of the building. And then you have like the awning and canopy features that kind of mask it a little bit. So it is toned down. It, it was a definite improvement from the first of middle.
Phil, I think if you look at the Taco Bell around the corner, they did something similar. They don't have a bell tower. They just have a smaller sign. They still have a logo that says, hey, this is a Taco Bell. But the building doesn't look the same as a lot of other Taco Bells. There's no golden arches. There's none of, or whatever else. Anyway, I think that they've done a pretty good job and certainly they could, they could add more, but I, I think we leave it to staff to negotiate or work with the developer best you can.
And being the only woman up here, I understand how things should match. And I think it matches Costco just fine.
I'm not sure where to go with that. On, on either how you prefaced it, because in this day and age, either on how you prefaced it or where you end up, ended up. Is there, are there other, let me, let me get back to the color. Are there any other design features that you, staff compromised on with the applicant? Was there anything else that, I don't, personally, I don't see anything else necessarily. It's just that the, the bright color caught my eyes.
No, they meet all of the code requirements. And they did, as we mentioned previously, really substantially increased their windows, the transparency requirement.
So, and I, I need, I need at least two other commissioners to concur. And I'm not trying to twist anybody's arm. What I left entirely me, if if staff is entirely comfortable with this, but staff also is, they're the ones who hear from the council. Why did you let, why did you let this get to where it is? And I'm not saying it's not acceptable. If it can be, if, if staff, as you said, negotiated, is that the expression you used?
Tom? Yeah.
If. Yeah, if, if you can work with the developer to, and if it ends up being the best as it is, and you're comfortable with that. But if you think you certainly, I think, if we so vote, would have our authority to, to see if it can be made just a little bit less obvious in the blue. A little less bright. Is that, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for some.
So you, you're not going to condition it, but you just would like us to work a little more with the applicant to see if there's any option to tone it down further.
Yes. And if you, as Tom said, if you end up, you're, you're still comfortable with it, then, and you can certainly blame it on planning commission.
That sounds good. We can do that.
That sound, for the whole world, the thousands of people out there watching is. Scott, you have, you have some thoughts. I welcome them.
Yeah, I, it's not an easy topic to write code, to design things and highlights and whatnot. I think what we're hearing is good direction, both from the petitioner and staff. My prior experience, I think what we don't want to happen is a project, a site plan to come in that people point to, we, we don't want that to happen. And then my prior job, we had projects that came in where that was the, the white elephant in the community is like, we don't want that to happen. I don't think that's the case in this instance. I think what staff is merely doing is pointing some challenges with our code interpretation and meeting the expectations of the community for that. As you said, Phil, in the past was that rural feel and we got rid of that and kind of the neutral tone. So just to help everybody understand where we're coming from, our code doesn't really provide that clarity, but at the same time, we want to make sure that staff points out that those are challenges that we're facing with some of these projects coming in.
Thanks. That's, that's helpful. I appreciate how you put it. I, again, I'm thrilled that, I am, lest it sounded facetious, lest it sounded insincere. Thrilled when a, a business owner developer says, we recognize the need to maybe to compromise, willing to meet halfway. That's very seldom. So certainly that you're where I'll, where I'll be taking my coffee business when you get open, just having heard that. Appreciate it very much. So commissioners, if you're, if you're comfortable with that and have no other questions, to allow staff to work in, work with the developer and see what else, if anything, we can do to move this along. Anybody, any other questions about this? In any regard. Michael?
I'm just, what's your average ticket time? I'm concerned about cars coming out and impacting traffic leaving Costco. What's, what's your average ticket?
Our goal is between 45 and 60 seconds a car at the window. So we a lot of the, our operational practices are similar to Chick-fil-A when we queue up cars in those, that side-by-side stacked lanes. We have employees who go out and greet the customer and take their order with iPads so that we can queue them up inside and get ahead of it. So again, ideally, it's, you know, 60 seconds a car would be a dream. On the weekends and afternoons, when there's four or five people in a car all shopping and stuff, it's not realistic, but yeah, and I think we have 32 or 36 cars here, which is pretty much double the most we've ever had. So.
Yeah, if somebody pulls into that line to get a cup of coffee, they're, you've got a great product if they're willing for that way.
Yeah, if it ever backs up, that's a whole new fun issue, but I do not anticipate that. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Michael. Commissioners, anybody else got questions? Is everybody comfortable? I'm not.
I just want to.
Probably anybody into my own particular issues here.
Well, I just want to be clear what we're going forward with. It's not an official condition, right? And we're not saying that you must make changes. It's just, we're saying that.
We're giving the staff. We're giving the staff to further discretion.
If there's an opportunity to do something, but we're not saying you, we want something or, you know, we're requiring a change.
I, I think not. I think if, if we're not putting the staff, I like how Scott put it, we're paraphrasing, we're not putting the staff in an untenable position, but I think we, we, in a broad sense, we trust staff to get to this point. But we understand staff's sometimes limited by the code at this point. And with the discretion that we have, and then the charge that we have on behalf of council and the town, I think it's fair to extend staff's authority beyond the, the code. I think it's fair to extend staff's authority beyond the code. And if they're, if they end up at the same place, as several of you said, this is not unacceptable as is. But if I think, if we can tone it down a little bit to accents, I like that concept. I like harmonious certainly, and I like, you know, the, the neutral tones. But I understand the branding that goes with that, that particular color. So is that?
Yeah.
Okay. So if our attorney was here, she would phrase the motion better. But I think what we need is a motion given what we, so who wants to take a crack at this?
I think what you're saying is.
I see a bunch of, everybody leaning back in these chairs instead of hearing the mic.
So I think what you're saying is motion to approve item 6A. And giving staff the.
Discretion?
Discretion, good word, not direction, but discretion to, you know, look at any further changes with the applicant.
I believe so.
Yeah.
I couldn't have said it any better. I didn't.
Yep.
Everybody's comfortable with that? Okay, will that suffice for a motion? Scott, you're the best arbiter of that. And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Kathy, I take it you're comfortable with that. We're comfortable with you working with the staff. And welcome to Timoth.
Thank you.
Very good.
Look forward to it.
Thanks. Okay, reports here, I've got several things, but first let me ask, anybody else have anything here? Okay. So a good place to start is, because we, we, we didn't really get to this point. But if I didn't mention at the last meeting, we, we've got another, another arrow in our quiver in the form of what I proposed as special, special issues of planning commission. And I credit to, to Logan and the staff, the last two council meetings, they have, she has, they have captured very, very well for council. Things that came before us didn't necessarily rise to a level of a condition. I go back, the first, first time was the oil and gas regulations. Last time for council on their agenda was Timoth Shores last week. And they did a nice job to the point of it's on their screen, the whole room could see it. Everybody watching at home, those that were, could see it. And it was very front, much front and center for council, which I think helps the synergy in the process. So we really appreciate that. So as we go forward, there may be things that certainly anybody else can bring up or, or I'll certainly ask. Is this, is this a special issue that needs to, and maybe doesn't rise to a condition? So any, any questions about that? It, it is, I think it is a valuable tool for us in working with, in sharing information with, with council. So staff, any, anything on this before I have a couple of other items? Okay, good. Appreciate that. In a similar vein, I owe everybody an apology. I kind of jumped the gun on when Logan was getting the packets out. Certainly what I meant to say in the email I sent to everybody was this first time around, instead of Friday, you're going to get it on Thursday. And then hereafter, or maybe we go to Wednesday and then Tuesday, but hereafter. So my apologies, but I believe the intent is going forward to get them out now, Tuesday before the following Tuesday's meeting.
Yes, we would like to get them to you a week prior to the meeting. So you have adequate time to review the material and ask us any questions. So you are able to email us if you have a question on process or maybe on the application. And then that will just allow us, you know, if one person asks, it's probably maybe two or three people have the same question and we can make sure to cover that in our presentation.
And, and thank you, and a couple of things toward that end. Again, I, I think our attorney would say we could, don't, don't CC anybody else on these questions to staff. It, it could rise to the level of ex parte communication. But yeah, we've always had, commissioners have always had this, this opportunity. These would be things that, not things necessarily that need to be brought up in the meeting, but information you'd want to have to help you with things that you do bring up in the meeting. So, and I, if there's too fine a line there, I, I can explain. But these are things that help you be better prepared to be able to ask questions of the applicant and the staff. Is that a fair way to put it? And I would also say, knowing the caseload that they have and, and things are going to pick up, apparently are picking up pretty quickly here, excuse me. The earlier in the week after you see the packet, that you email Logan, probably the better. Safe to say to give more time to be able to answer your questions. Any questions about that? So I'm going to editorialize a little bit and, but kind of make a point here if I can. So the, the rec staff, the rec director and the, and the rec coordinator held in conjunction with the consultant from Barry Dunn, who the town, excuse me, whom the town has engaged to do a, it's called a pathway to play, a master plan for Parks Recreation, Open Space. They held over the last two days, two yesterday and two today, focus groups. And I attended all those and Tom attended two of them online. And I, I was real disappointed, and this is somewhat out the, without the, not within the purview of planning commission. But we had the first one yesterday, the first of the two yesterday. We had three people participate and I was one of them. So two really members of the public. The second one, we had, we had three people, first one, two people, the second one. And that was one of the other people that had been there for the first one and me. So no new people. And yet the staff and the consultant were fully prepared to ask questions and they, they did what they could. Today, the first session, we had, I think, five, Tom counting, and that's counting you and me. So we had three other residents on there. And then the last one, I think we had four, four people. So just, it was very disappointing, particularly when we have so many people that want to get involved, want to have a say in things. And the, the rec staff and this consultant, who's very, I'm very impressed. And he had today, what, the second session, Tom, he had a couple of, one from his staff and another person who's engaged in the process. And developed a number of rec centers here in this area, including Windsor, which I'm very fond of and use. So I guess my point is, and for, for those, anybody that is watching, unfortunately, there's nobody else here tonight. But any day, I'm told, in people's mail will be a survey that gives people an opportunity. And I certainly would encourage people to, to participate in this process. And then I understand there's a, Scott, there's another survey that's going to go out after they gather some information from this one. It'll probably go out maybe in December, I believe. But we certainly, certainly want the public to be engaged in this process. So I appreciate whatever else you can add to this, lest I get off my soapbox here.
Yeah, so there'll be a mailed survey as part of the post master plan process that will go out. And then later in the year, there'll be a community survey, which is much broader than the focus of the post plan. And so we wanted to make sure that there isn't survey fatigue, you know, like, oh, we're getting another survey. And a little bit of separation, so there's a little bit of clarity that the post survey is different than the community survey. So the timing of that's probably looking at end of December, maybe early in 2025 for the community, for the community survey.
And these are, I was really not just impressed with the preparation, but it's really getting crunch time for the public's ability to express opinions on these things and get involved. And there's particularly, they're, they're talking about a, a rec center, which I can say I'm very much in favor of it. Certainly a lot, lot of issues, but this will be, this will be the next big thing for the residents. Tom, you, you chimed in with some excellent thoughts and he had a, Tom had one that I mentioned in this session. Certainly that's why we appreciate having him on planning commission. He brought up something that staff and the consultant certainly hadn't thought of. And so he certainly earned his keep, but we want other people to participate. So anyway, enough, enough about that. The last thing, council at their last meeting adopted their own BOB's Rules of Order. Scott, what, where do you think, you think we're headed to maybe a planning commission? Are we do, is there anything that we ought to be looking at too? Theirs was not a drastic change, certainly, and, but, but your thoughts on whether that needs? Cause I did hear the mayor say, look out my way and say, perhaps planning commission is going to consider this as well. So I'd be remiss in not asking.
Well, first of all, I'd say there's two things, which I was going to do in a staff report. We're looking at your bylaws, and so I want to make sure that we get that before you, sometime before the end of the year, so we can get feedback on the bylaws to update those. I generally think that you currently practice your meetings in a kind of BOB's Rules format. We could incorporate that into the bylaws, you know, with the intent behind that. Given the decision-making authority that council has, it probably makes more sense for them to officially adopt that. But again, it's, would be up to your discretion if you want to formalize that rules, that BOB's rules. But again, I, I think how you conduct your meetings are in the same spirit of that than Robert's Rules of Order. And we've already are practicing some of that with allowing public comment on site plans, public comment on non, on business items and things that are on the agenda, even motions and rules or voting. There's a lot of similarities that you're already practicing right now.
Well, that's good to hear. Appreciate that. Commissioners.
And I can check with Carolyn if you officially need to adopt it, but we've already implemented some things that are very similar to what you've already historically have done, as well as with the intent of the BOB's rules.
Very good. Well, that, lest we saddle staff with any additional work. Certainly if you're comfortable that we're doing this, I, I think we'll leave it. Next time we, I'm able to engage with her, I'll, I'll ask her if she thinks anything is warranted because she was played an integral part, correct, in what council did. And it was, as I said, there were no C changes with council. I didn't. But I thought they, we heard during that presentation, we heard that it's important to codify certain things. But it wasn't necessarily that, that we were doing anything incorrectly.
Yeah, and I think your current bylaws, and I'm not aware that you've adopted quote unquote, Robert's Rules of Orders, that are a little bit more, have a little bit more formal processes than, than BOB's does.
Okay.
And even if it's just a reference to what the town council adopted.
Well, if it's, all right, I'll, I'll.
But I can talk to, I can talk to Carolyn with that.
Yeah, and if she wants to talk with me, I could do that too.
I mean, really, I think it just helps the public and yourselves understand how you conduct business more than anything else, which the bylaws somewhat specify some of that.
Very good. Commissioners, anything else, staff?
Scott, you have one other thing, so I appreciate it, Phil, for bringing up the bylaws. So the intent would be to share that with you and get feedback and then you could adopt that. It doesn't go to council. Second thing that we've talked about at staff is bringing forward land use code amendments. Again, to get your feedback about how to prioritize them. We, we have a list and it always seems to grow. And so before our staff starts drafting and amending, that's one thing that we'd like the commissioners to help us prioritize some of those amendments that we're bringing forward. You know, the oil and gas was kind of a priority of, of council. But again, we want some direction from, from you all. There's a few amendments that were adopted at the state legislature that we'll have to bring forward. But just want to give you, that's looking into the crystal ball. We'll be preparing kind of a list of amendments that we see. And that would help us help to prioritize what we want to bring forward.
Well, we appreciate, but being part of the process, certainly Wendy anticipating, would you see that as being a separate work, a, a work session night when we don't have other business items?
Yeah, we could, we could put it on the, an item for discussion. If you want to call it a work session, I could even see tonight, we only had one agenda item. Tonight might've been a good night where that could happen. I haven't picked a date yet. I also will say that there'll be some cases coming before you that you might not have heard before. So there'll be some new cases, particularly some vacations of right of way, which are probably ones that I'm not sure if any of you have reviewed those. They're in the pipeline, so just want you to be prepared for some different things coming your way.
Sure, you know, have we had?
They don't happen very often, but we have two in the pipeline right now. So the, I just, that's a good opportunity, as Logan talked about, the staff reports, getting them a week in advance. If you have questions, we can clarify some of that in the presentation material.
There's a good, there's a good example of something you'd want when you see it in the packet. Do you, when do you anticipate that coming as a?
Probably not until November.
Okay.
The other one is, that one's a little bit more uncertain on the timeline on that one.
Are we likely to have a meeting that we're looking at first week in October now? Are we likely to have a meeting then?
Yes. Oh. Possibly. We're still deciding.
Okay, one way or the other. Is there, is there anybody, just if we do have a meeting, is there anybody right now that knows they won't be there?
I won't be here.
It's time, I'd never quite know, but it's harvest time, so I'll likely be at, at the farm.
Okay. Well, I, I think that's something with the bylaws, that we're trying to, we're trying to create an expectation so it's easier for you guys, you're volunteers, we respect your time. And trying to, to plan your lives accordingly is, is helpful to know when those meetings are going to be held and not held. So we're trying to be more proactive on letting you know when we don't have agenda items and canceling them. And the certainty of when the, the meetings will be moving forward.
I, I do see an additional benefit, unless you tell me this is, this can't happen, to getting the packet out earlier for, while we know, and I've shared with several of you, we, especially on quasi judicial items. But my personal preference, even on quasi administrative, is to not have remote participation. But with a packet coming out early, is there a way to take advantage for a commissioner who wouldn't be here? For them to read the packet, ask questions and incorporate that while not a voting circumstance, incorporate that in. So we have more of a, of a, you know, you see where I'm going.
Right.
Tom, with this, we have the value of their input, if only, only to staff, then conveyed to us at the meeting. Is there a legal way to, to, to do that?
For remote participation?
Not, not, not remote participation, but given, for instance, if, if we do meet that, Tom and Wendy have already indicated they would not be here, but they could, they get, they get the packet anyway, Tuesday. They could share some concerns with staff, they, via email communication, no CCs with staff.
Yeah, don't, don't CC, but if there, if you have to direct questions to staff, email staff, those questions and staff can clarify any of those things during the presentation, even if you, I mean, we don't know if you can make it or not. You might get sick that evening and you might have had the intent of showing up. But again, we just want to make sure that those are items that we could clarify in the staff report or the presentation.
Yeah, what I'm, you get, you see where I'm headed. It, 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 it doesn't go any further. You're not, you're not. You're not, you're not participating remotely, but you, perhaps you may bring up something and then staff can mention that a commissioner who was present did ask the question about this. And, and as you said, incorporate that in your presentation. It, it still can help.
Yeah, we might have a question about parking or, or traffic or drainage or something like that, that we can specifically address to, to, to staff and let them bring it up saying, you know, this was something that we looked at and resolved.
Yeah, I, I think any advanced information we have, it, it helps provide that feedback. Gives us time, you know, I don't, it's hard to be, find things on the fly. If, I mean, you guys find, sometimes ask really great questions, we, we don't know and we kind of have to look and do the research. So anytime we can anticipate some of those questions.
Yep.
Would be helpful so we can clarify that moving forward.
Today's, today's focus group was a perfect example. If that had, if it had been the, and I won't mention necessarily, it, neither here nor there, if the rec staff had been here participating, as they probably will be, with this, with this rec center making a presentation to us, as they will, along with the planning staff, and to hear, hear them say to Tom, we never thought of that. And that's, that's not something necessarily at this stage. And I'm not castigating them by any shape or form because it's so premature. But he brought something up that they hadn't thought of regarding a particular site. And that would be an example, if you weren't here, but you still noted that, that would be helpful to us.
Sure.
When the actual presentation, okay. Not, not, not the extent that we cross over into ex parte. In other words, you can't, you can't tell me, but you can, you can ask staff for clarity, you can give staff the information and they can then, perhaps they thought of it, perhaps they haven't, but it, it, it could be helpful without crossing any legal lines.
Yeah, again, I, I think just again, those clarification questions or, or things that maybe wasn't included in the packet that could help address a question that you would have, not necessarily saying like, hey, I don't support this project, let everybody else know, that wouldn't be appropriate.
Yeah.
You know, that's pretty straightforward, I would think. You know, hey, I'm not going to be here, but let everybody know I don't support this project. Staff would not share that with anybody. That's not a type of communication that I would recommend. But if you had questions on, for tonight, the staff report had, staff code didn't have any clarity on the, the color highlights or whatever. If you had a question like, well, what would you recommend or what standard, then, or what are other communities do in this situation? Then staff could go do some little research to say, well, hey, maybe in, you know, Denver, they have a 10% threshold on bright colors. And that would be the kind of thing that they could present as an example, as opposed to us trying to do it on the fly at the meeting. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, you bet. Okay, everybody comfortable with that? Okay, anybody else, anything else?
One other thing, Phil, I, I think Logan had planned a, a tour in mid-October. Any updates?
The itinerary is coming, so I will, I'll kind of create a little packet of information. And then right now, we're targeting to visit two housing developments, one in Westminster and one in Longmont. And then if we have time, we'd like to maybe do a pit stop somewhere else. But yes, we hope all of you can attend. It'll be a good, just, we want to just start a conversation and have dialogue with you guys and just walk, you know, these developments so you can see kind of how our code works on the ground and maybe some gaps that we have in our current land use code.
Great.
By the way, I'm glad you mentioned that. I'm remiss in not mentioning the other, at the same time, we invited on the bus tour, Logan invited or suggested to those who wanted to go to hear a prominent national planner who's, what was his name?
Charles Marone.
Yeah, Charles Marone. He spoke at a church down in Longmont. Marty and Wendy and I went and it was very valuable. It was, I, I don't know, there weren't a lot of takeaways, but there was, I think, as we talked about on the way back, for each of us, there were various parts of it. I, I particularly liked the historical perspective on, on housing. It was primarily on housing. It was, how many, three, four hundred people there in this big church down there who were interested in this. It was, this guy knows his stuff. So appreciate you inviting us. And we got to hear some great tunes from one of my favorite recording artists along the way, thanks to Wendy. So, all right, that's enough. Just trying to make it worthwhile for everybody here, get our money's worth. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.